I have a short statement to read. Just give me a few moments to read this, I'm gonna get the meeting started. Hello, welcome to the meeting of the Eastland Peters Council Board of Supervisors. My name is Corey Meyer and I am the chairman. I want to inform all participants that this meeting is being recorded. Due to the COVID-19 virus, this meeting is being conducted virtually utilizing Zoom, which is a cloud-based platform for remote video and audio conferences. The township building is not open for this meeting so that all participants can observe and maintain social distancing. The Zoom application is free to the public. The general public is therefore able to join the meeting by connection through the internet or by calling in by phone. The township...
Hold on one second, Corey. It's recording.
Okay, great. The township is expecting to utilize its vehicles for all future public meetings during and after the COVID-19 crisis. Please continue to check the township website calendar for any updates related to these public meetings. Agendas for these public meetings will also be available on the township's website and will be posted on the front of the township building. Joining me in the room observing social distancing are Supervisor Glenn Everly, Vice Chair John Blowers, Emergency Services Chair Bruce Paul, and Chief Dave Keens of Lafayette Fire Company, and Township Manager Ralph Hudson. Also participating on the Zoom are Supervisors Gabe Buckwalter. Gabe, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine.
Great. And Supervisor Ethan Denny. And we also have Sarah Hitchens, our zoning officer, playing in and seeing and muting and unmuting and making sure we're all doing our best. In order to accommodate public comments at this meeting, the township will be accepting public comments in writing or via email. Instructions for the submission of public comments are available on the township website. We will now proceed with the meeting agenda. While the meeting is in order of the Eastland Peters Township Supervisors, Monday, April 20th, 2020 meeting, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge to leave this to the flag. In the United States of America, a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we will take public comment for non-agenda items only. It looks like we have a few visitors on the Zoom. If you have any public comment, as I said, there are instructions on the website as well. You can raise your hand and we can call on you to provide a public comment. First, trust that any comments from the internet?
We did not receive any comments in writing and we have not on the email account.
Okay. Any public comments from the public on the Zoom? Okay. I'll look for... before we take it to vote. And we will use roll call vote as we did last time. I'm not sure if I said that right. We will definitely do that. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have the consent agenda. We have two items. We have approval of the minutes of the Monday, April 6th, 2020 regular meeting. Assuming everyone has had a chance to look at those minutes, the correct minutes. And then second, we have approval to pay invoices from all funds. We have a total of $191,762.28 with one significant amount of those bills, $8,452.20, sorry, $8,452.20 to hand in hand fire company for fuel and insurance reimbursements. I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So the motion was made by Mr. Blowers, second by Mr. Everly. Any comments from board members? Any comments from the public regarding the consent agenda? Okay. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Start with Mr. Blowers.
Aye.
Mr. Everly?
Aye.
Mr. Buckwalter?
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye.
And Chair Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we have Old Business 5A proposed petition regarding 2020 tax upset sales. Ralph, can you give us context to this?
Sure. The request to consider this petition was sent to the township by the county treasurer's office. And what the petition would do is petition the court to delay the county's usual process in proceeding to tax upset sale of real estate, delinquent real estate tax payments. The sale would normally happen in September of this year, but if the petition goes in and the court agrees, the court's not currently in session, but if they would agree, then the tax upset sales would be delayed. And the purpose of this would be to give additional time to those property owners who are struggling with their delinquencies.
The petition is written as all townships and all school districts together in one petition. I'm assuming if a certain township or a school district decides not to go with it, they could still go for the other townships and school districts could continue, or is it we either are all in or one's out or not doing anything?
I think with this issue different from the issue of paying at the base rate, I think this one could probably go forward, you know, with whoever decides to do it and those that don't, it's fine. The other one that you dealt with at the last meeting was kind of the everybody or whatever.
Okay. Okay, so we have this petition in front of us as Ralph described. So these are taxes in arrears for taxes that should have been paid last year, 2019, unrelated to COVID frankly in any way. It was when the economy was...
Which I think was our pause, is the ring of applause last time because we realized this was not related to COVID.
Right.
This was folks' properties that were in arrears part two.
Mr. Chairman, if I might comment?
Sure.
Yeah, so yes, delinquent taxes are from the past. However, most folks who have delinquent taxes are actually in a payment plan to repay those taxes. So the ability of someone to repay those back taxes is definitely going to be impacted by the current coronavirus. So with unemployment rates going up and people losing their jobs, if someone has a current payment plan and is making payments, the current crisis shouldn't stop them from continuing that or force their property to be sold. So I support the concept of delaying this upset or not doing the upset tax sale this year because the payment plans are definitely impacted by the current emergency situation we're in.
Are these individuals that are in the payment plans or they actually nothing or do we not know any details on this?
I don't know. It could be the whole gamut of folks who owe back taxes. So some of those folks are in payment plans, a lot of them are, some of them just haven't made any payment.
The comments from the board, we don't have a motion quite yet, but other comments from the board, I'll look for comments from the public as well.
I just don't have anything on the email.
Okay, fine. Okay, so we have a proposed petition for 2020 tax upset sales. We have a motion to approve this proposed petition.
I'm moving to approve the proposed petition for 2020 tax upset sales.
Second. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public regarding petition for 2020 offset tax sales? Okay, I'll look for roll call vote. Like Chair Blowers.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Ethan.
Aye.
Mr. Denny?
Aye.
Mr. Buckwalter?
Aye.
Chair Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we have 5B, the developers agreement for High Associates Zook Yoder Esch site. Looks like we have actually a few people here for this. Comments or can I turn it over to Mark? Are you going to speak? I have...
I'd be glad to talk if Tara unmutes me.
I did unmute you.
Great.
Mr. Stanley, please proceed.
We've been working with your staff for about the last two to three weeks to put this developers agreement together. There's really two driving forces behind it. One, the DEP city consent decree, which requires us to go through full sewer planning as opposed to processing a sewer exemption module. And the second is to try to keep the construction of Thaddeus Stevens College of Technology on track. Right now, we're held, but we understand that as of May 8th, we should be able to move forward with construction on a limited basis. The, as I mentioned, both working with your staff and Susan Piper, the township solicitor, we exchanged a number of different drafts going back and forth with a final draft being agreed to and executed and delivered to the township towards the end of next week or the end of last week. It addresses a couple of things. One, allowing High to proceed forward with the recording of the plan upon the satisfaction of all DMA review comments with the exception of the full sewer planning approval. And secondly, memorializing the agreement between the township and High Associates regarding the traffic impact study and the ability to obtain certificates of use and occupancy. So at this time, I believe the document is in final form. We've executed it. We've delivered a, executed copy to the township, both through email and dropping a copy off at the township building. Ken Hornbeck is participating by Zoom and either Ken or I could answer any questions you have, but if there's no questions by the board, we would ask that the township approve and execute the proposed developers agreement.
Ken, before we ask any questions? Ken, have you any comments? Anything you have? No, no.
I don't know. Is Ken unmuted?
No, I'm not muted.
All right. I didn't know if you could hear that or was clear.
I didn't hear if it was addressed to me. Was there a question?
Yeah, can you make comments you had? You would like to add to what Mark Stanley said?
No, I think Mark did a great job summarizing the process and how we got to where we are. So we appreciate working with the township staff to put us in a position to be able to break ground as soon as the governor lifts the restriction and deliver this Thaddeus Stevens facility before fall of next year.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions from the board? Gabe first.
No, I have no questions.
Ethan?
No questions.
All right. No, no. Okay. I'll look for a motion to approve the developers agreement for High Associates Zook Yoder Esch.
Remove.
Second.
Mr. Buckwalter?
Second.
Second by Ethan, thank you, sorry about that. Any other comments from the board members?
Ken, just those are positivity, I guess. You know, I don't know when we began working on the Zook Esch site. It was my first year on board, but I'm just really excited for the community to see it continue to move forward. Ken, Mark, thank you very much. High's commitment to seeing that property move forward and to see the development of the entire Zook Esch site become a thriving, productive parcel in this community is a testament to what the High organization said they were going to do, 50-year plan, you know, tremendous investment in the community and it is. So every time I turn around and I drive by that property, I see what is going to become a great contribution to the community. So I thank you guys. I'm excited to see Thaddeus Stevens come there, Penn College of Health Sciences, Central Plant Law of Health Sciences, Thaddeus Stevens, you know, Eastland Peters becoming an education hub as well as a business hub. So thank you very much, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Anything from email? Anything from people on Zoom? Okay. I will ask for a roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Chair Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks for joining remotely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next on the agenda, we have 6A presentations regarding fire apparatus purchase proposal. Lafayette Fire Company. Can you move it? Yeah. Chair, the Emergency Services Committee, Bruce Paul, and Fire Chief for Lafayette Fire Company, Dave Keens, next to join us.
Thank you for having us. As Corey mentioned, my name is Bruce Paul, Mrs. Rep. Lafayette Fire Company, and Chairman of the Township Emergency Services Committee.
Bruce, I need you to speak up.
With me is Dave Keens. He's the Chief of Lafayette and he will do his presentation of the proposed fire engine purchase, then I'll give the Emergency Services Committee response.
It might sound better if you actually sit, so you're more comfortable standing in line, but Dave Keens, if you can hear a little closer. Yes. Yes. Thank you. Can you hear me okay, Karen?
You're good.
Thank you. I come before the board to see you need to present a proposal for the purchase of a new fire engine for Lafayette Fire Company. The Lafayette engine process, as you mentioned, began a little over two years ago, early in 2018. In my opinion, Lafayette Fire Company Engine Committee has worked hard and done a great job of planning a new fire engine that will meet the needs of the community long-term. We have focused on having a basic structural pump with a wheelbase, turning radius, and overall height requirement, the agent accessing alleys and narrow streets and small areas that have become more prevalent as our area continues to develop and grow. The unit we are proposing is a Pierce enforcer with seating for six personnel with a 2,000 gallon per minute pump and 500 gallon per minute water tank. The unit price is currently stated at $622,000 and all these rounding. With the prepayment discount implied, the unit cost is reduced to $598,000. How do we intend to plan to pay for this engine? The new engine cost is $598,000 rounding. The township share is 60% or $358,000. The Lafayette share is 40%, $240,000. In order to gain the discounts, we need to pay for the apparatus in full on contract signing. Lafayette will secure a low interest bank loan for the full amount to take advantage of the prepayment discounts, and we will provide a down payment of $103,000 consisting of funds on hand, a grant by the state, and some volunteer farmers relief association funds. The balance would be $494,000. It would be a bank loan that has no payments until we would take delivery of the new engine. The in-process engine will be the collateral, therefore there is no lien on anything Lafayette. So in today's times, it's pretty much unheard of having a loan you don't have to make a payment on until one year or until you take delivery of the apparatus. But that's the deal. During the build time, Volunteer Farmers Services, which is the funding and lending institution, would seek to acquire a 2% state FEMA loan and approximately one month prior to delivery would pay off the 3% bank loan and convert to the state loan. And not until that time, the FEMA loan, once it takes place, the township would disburse the planned share of 60% of the fund. So that's one year from contract signing. The $358,000 towards a unit purchase leaving the remaining FEMA loan balance at $136,000, which must be paid monthly and auto-directed from the fire company's account. That loan payment is approximately $872 for a 15-year term loan. FEMA loans can go to a 20-year maximum if you take a payment down to about $650 a month. We are seeking a 15-year term and there is an upside potential to actually do this depending on what happens with the current state of the economy and the current condition of the current virus.
Emergency Services Committee, like the fact that $25,000 can be saved by doing financial loans. The engine itself, the fact of a short wheelbase similar to the Whitmer engine with tighter turning radius to get into housing developments and alleys, as Dave mentioned, was also in favor of him. The proposed engine request, a request for funds was passed unanimously by the Emergency Services Committee. On a different note, this will probably be my last time before the board.
Thank you, Chair.
I would like to thank the board for your support and your support of the volunteer fire companies because without you, they have a tough job to begin with. It would just be that much tougher. So, myself and all the fire companies, we owe you a big thanks. So thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Yeah. Yeah, before we talk about that, I know at some point we'll thank Bruce for his service, but I spent, what, four years, I guess, on the Emergency Services Committee after Don was on for a long time and now you're back on, right? But Bruce, luckily you were the chair. Somehow you got talked into being the chair for those four years that I was on. And frankly, I had no idea what it would walk me into, but you did a great job. You know, I feel like Emergency Services, of course, is awesome in our community just because of the cheese getting along and communicating and talking and working together. And a lot of it has to do with, you know, how those meetings are run formally and all the formal conversations that happen outside of those meetings as well. So thank you for your service. What questions you have for Dave, for Bruce?
If you're looking for questions, I have a couple. I want to understand, I wanted to understand the bridge loan. Dave, did you say that the bridge loan, no payments would be made on that until the equipment was delivered?
That is correct.
I see. Okay.
So actually until one month after it was delivered. But we will secure a FEMA loan, a state loan, one month prior to delivering the latest in order to pay off that bridge loan.
So in essence, there will be no payments made on the bridge loan?
None other than the down payment.
I see. Yes.
Ethan, any questions?
No questions.
I'm assuming it's approved by the resounding contractor now or is it?
Yes, we have to add an extension on the contract to give this time to this meeting. The original signing date was March and the COVID crisis and cancellation of the city gave Pierce Pierce and asked them for an extension for the prepaid discount and if Pierce was good enough working then to grant that.
Question I had, you listed the quoted interest rate of 2%. Is that locked in or is that?
That has been the typical statement for as long as I can remember.
And that's for 15, for 20 years, is there a certain percent?
It's 2%. No matter how much you can lend up to $200,000, that's the maximum at 2%.
And the thought going from 15-year versus 20-year, that same percent is just a focus to keep the money?
Hate to draw it out any longer than we have to. The idea behind the $872 is multiply that by 12 months, if you come up with around $10,000 a year, and if the state grant is still in existence, that would be enough to actually pay that loan annually.
Okay.
In case they were doing something locally with donations that they would not pay.
Yeah. So in some cases, that doesn't make sense. You have 20 years, it means only $650 or $32,000 you pay. You haven't paid any more because of the increase. Okay.
It's only you, but it's 15-year time.
Yeah. Any other questions from the board members? Okay, questions from the public, any perhaps from email or?
I'll take out the email.
Any questions from members of the public? Okay, I will look for a motion to approve the recommendation from the Emergency Services Committee for the purchase of the new apparatus by Lafayette Fire.
So moved.
That's invited. Don, second by Glenn. Any other comments from the board? Any other comments from the public? And motion made in second. John, vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Chair, it is aye. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Again, Bruce, thank you for everything. She Keens, thank you for everything Lafayette is doing. Plus, Crazy Steve, Gribble on the phone on the Zoom as well. Thank you to all four of our fire companies. This is trying times and I said at last meeting, thank you for all the first responders, EMS, fire, police, healthcare workers. Really appreciate everything you guys have done. It's not easy, but thank you for your support also. Couldn't do without.
Thanks, guys. Bruce, we'll have you back and watch for the conversation later, for sure. Thanks, guys. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have proposed zoning amendment for unit distribution regarding commercial redevelopment overlay zone C3.
The board heard a presentation from the owners and representatives of the shops at Rock Vale a couple of meetings ago, I think. And at that time, they indicated that they were going to finalize the preparation of an application or petition to amend the zoning ordinance by creating a proposal to amend the zoning ordinance to create a commercial redevelopment overlay zone.
a commercial redevelopment overlay zone in the C3 zoning district. They have done that. They've submitted that. And they're asking that the board this evening take action to accept that proposal and to send it out to all of the planning partners that have to review zoning amendments and proceed with processing toward holding a public hearing, at which time the board would hear from the public on the proposal and then ultimately, you know, make a decision on the proposed amendment. If Mr. Stanley, was there? Mr. Stanley's not there anymore, so.
Claudia, Claudia's there.
I'm sorry, Claudia, I didn't.
No problem. Yeah, I'm here on behalf of Rockville Acquisitions. I'm, you know, that was a perfect summary of what we're here requesting tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has about the proposal.
Thank you, Claudia. Thank you guys for the overview. So the, just the neighbor municipalities. So that's sort of an interesting area of the township, right? So you have Strasburg Borough. Does it go as far as Strasburg Township?
Yeah, actually, the borough isn't.
First, then there are.
Yeah, the borough wouldn't be included. They're not adjacent to it. So it would be.
Has to be adjacent.
Has to be adjacent and it would be all the way around the township, the school district and the county planning commission as well. All have to receive copies and have an opportunity to provide comments. Forty-five day comment period, once they receive.
And we would also send to West Earl since they're part of our Conestoga Regional Comprehensive Plan.
Yeah. Claudia, have you had any conversations with any of the neighboring municipalities or is this then saying from the formal documents will be the first time they say it?
We have not had those conversations yet, but we certainly will as the, if you, you know, refer the petition on tonight.
Okay, great. Any questions from the board to Claudia? Stan has reviewed the document full and complete and?
It is a complete submission. We haven't reviewed it thoroughly yet.
Yeah, which that's part of the process. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, Dave or Ethan?
No, I understand this simply to be accepting this for review and, and distribution. So we're not really reviewing it tonight. But I, I just want to comment that I, I'm eager to help this owner do something here that is going to be a solution to a situation I believe needs addressed.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, it seems like the situation is definitely exacerbated with the COVID crisis. I mean, all retail essentially is being shut down except grocery stores. This cannot help some of the struggling retail that, you know, was, was happening prior to this, this request. So agree, Dave. Thanks for making that line. Okay, I will accept a motion to accept the proposed zoning amendment for review and distribution. For the, Dave, moved?
Second.
Ethan, second. Okay. Any other comments from the board? Okay, any other comments from the public? Actually, any emails or?
No, definitely on the email.
Okay. Okay, we'll do a voice roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Karen, aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Thanks, Claudia, for joining. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no items under seven for action items. We have managers' reports. A, we can have a street scape planning communication report.
Just briefly to report to the board, we, we continue to keep our eye on the ball here with the streetscape plan, but there hasn't been a whole lot happening during the COVID crisis. So we did have our regular bi-monthly update meeting on Friday, April 3rd with a design engineer for the Western Gateway Project and with our own design engineer working on the various phases of projects. So our next meeting of that group is scheduled for June 5th. And hopefully by that time, you know, they can be released to go out and do things like survey work and, and things that'll help the process move along. So we're still working on that. Do you want me to just?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so as far as the Walton Street Extension and Greater Lancaster Energy Pathway, we have continued to be in communication with high associates who's doing the design work. Fortunately, they had gotten survey work done prior to the crisis beginning, so they've been able to work on the actual engineering of the project. Their process would be to next submit their next submission to PENDOT by the end of this month, which will include the, the first blush at the line and grade for both facilities. So that continues to move along. As far as public meetings and pandemic issues, the park board meeting scheduled for April 22nd has been canceled. Our public works staff continues to have difficulties with what are called flushable wipes, but they really aren't. They are creating problems in sewer systems. So, you know, we just want to continue to encourage people to throw those in the trash. Don't flush them. Sewer bill payments that were sent out at the beginning of April have continued to come in at pretty much a regular pace. So just want to let you know that billing process is pretty much normal at this point in time. All the department heads and myself are actively engaged in the process of reviewing the 2020 budget for items that could be eliminated or delayed in order to reduce expenses, given the expected losses of revenue from the various taxing sources that are going to be impacted by this crisis. So I'll be bringing proposals in that regard back to the board members for consideration at future meetings.
Great. Yeah, thank you. Anything we can do, the board can help to assist?
Sure. If you have any ideas on, on areas that you think would be, you know, priority places to look for reductions in expenses, we're happy to include those thoughts in our, in our efforts.
Okay. Well, it's a good, it's not an easy thing to do, right? I mean, government has to stay open and our expenses are essentially fixed for many things. I mean, projects clearly could be delayed, but those have often have long-term impact to, you know, if we hold off on regaining the road, the road gets worse and then ends up being more expensive down the road. So I think we have to be somewhat judicious in how we save being more expensive down the road.
Right. We're still trying to evaluate what the revenue impacts are going to be.
Right.
So all of that is going to be, you know, our best efforts to estimate those things and bring that information to you.
Yeah. I, I mean, assuming time, time will give us more data, right? So, meaning, you know, the, the real estate discount rate ends April 30th. By May, sometime in May, we should know what we collected. Using, using me as an example, my taxes are extra. My bank wants to get the 2% discount. I only get the 2% discount. It's, you know, hopefully, it's been received already by the, you know, by Bureau. So, but, you know, I guess by May, we should have a really good idea, at least from a discount perspective, who, who is paid. I think the sewer bill is a good witness, you know, I mean, it's a lot less clearly, but, you know, people are still paying that. Hopefully, that, that means better news.
Yeah, the ones that are going to be more challenging are going to be the earned income tax.
Yeah.
The local services tax and the admissions tax.
Right.
Are, are, are going to be hit hard.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the admissions tax produces a hefty sum on us.
Right.
Does. I think, I think it's, the budget was about $650,000 this year. And, you know, we really only had, you know, two months. Of course, Dutch Wonderland wasn't really open at that time, so is American Music Theater is
Right.
is the, the second highest research, highest generator there. So they had a couple of months, but, you know, that's.
Right. Yeah, I hadn't seen Dutch Wonderland. I hadn't seen that Dave announced. I know Hershey Park announced June 15th as a tentative.
Right. I have not heard an announcement of that regard either.
Right. Okay.
What do you think we decide on the store water tax that will never start?
At this point, it's planned to begin with the July billing. So it would go out with the sanitary sewer bills and the July 1st billing.
So that's something we should look at as far as the land here that must have over to the beginning of next year. Sometimes they go, but kind of bad time to start the tax.
Yeah. You know, I'm sure that ultimately, the way the structure is set up at this point, that's going to be the sewer authority's decision. But, you know, your input on that would be very important to them. So, you know, if, if you guys feel that, you know, for the community, it's important that that be delayed, you know, that's certainly something I can communicate through the authority.
Sure.
It will, it will create, you know, issues. We, we haven't heard anybody of the DEP say, don't worry about 2023 deadline to get all this stuff done. You know, you can wait five more years. And that hasn't happened. I, I don't expect it will happen. So we're, we're kind of still under the gun to, to get stuff done. If we don't have the resources to get it done, we're going to be in trouble in a couple of years.
Yeah, I would say, well, let's, let's bring it up again. You know, it's also time for implementation. We can discuss it at the next meeting. Might be generally intended to have, have a discussion for just so we don't forget. Figure out we should give that, give that direction to the sewer authority. Okay. Any, any other comments from the board first?
Are, are you looking for comments regarding anything in addition to the agenda?
Yeah, anything, anything in addition, people, for you, for you, Dave? Anything?
I'm honored. Hey, just comment about the mic again. You know, when Ken was on, he didn't know that you were addressing him and it was, I, I, it's better than what it was last month. I don't know, Ethan, do you want to comment from where you sit?
Yeah, only one of the mics is working, which is the way it was when we tested it and the second time we tested it. So unless you're running a different piece of software, you can't use two mics.
I see.
Okay, I'm not sure which mic.
The one, the one closest to John seems to be working.
Okay. Okay, we will, we'll test that and get that, get that working. It is, this meeting, clearly I'm wearing a mask. Last meeting I was not, this is not easy to talk through and fogged up my glasses, so it doesn't, again, not easy, so.
Well, with the, with the Senate Bill 851, that 841 that was signed today by the governor, we could all go remote. Just fine. So the requirement to have a quorum at the office is no longer there for the duration of the emergency.
Good, good, good to know. Thank you. Any comments from the public for non-agenda items? Okay, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by John. I'll do a quick voice vote or roll call vote. John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Ethan?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. Thanks for joining.
Thanks, guys. See you. See you.